I'd like to start by asking our city recorder to do a roll call.
Committee member Ernst. Here. Counselor Geary.
Here.
Committee member Harmon Ferry. Counselor Minkie.
Here.
Committee member Maxfield.
Here.
Counselor Chinowith. Committee member Cunningham.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Present.
Committee member Mason.
Here.
Counselor Peralta. Committee member Watney.
Present.
Council President Garvin.
Here.
Mayor Drabkin.
Here.
And Chair Hart.
Here.
Thank you. And at the last special called meeting of the Budget Committee, I failed to do introductions, but we have new Budget Committee members. And so I'd like to take a moment if the members of the Budget Committee could go around and introduce themselves to one another and the public and the council. That would be wonderful. So I think if we could just start, we'll just go around the room in this direction and then I'll do my best to get everybody on Zoom.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lonnie Watney. I've lived in McMinnville all of four beautiful years so far, but I am a true-blooded Oregonian. I work at the Allison Inn and Spa in Newburgh as the Director of Finance.
Thank you. Let's see. Jerry.
Jerry Mason. I'm a recovering city planner and city attorney and look forward to this entire undertaking.
Thank you.
Jerry Hart. I no longer am employed and I've been on the Budget Committee for several years.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Scott Cunningham. I've lived in the area since 2006. Up until recently, had two restaurants in the downtown, so Community Plate, which unfortunately we did close in the last couple of months, but still I'm a partner in Pizza Capo and am very much looking forward to the budget.
Thank you. And then looking to Zoom, Meredith.
Hi, I'm Meredith Maxfield. I am a stay-at-home parent and then also I'm a grad student at PSU, so I apologize. My class starts at 6:40, so I'm Zooming in from Portland right now.
Thank you so much for doing so. And Victoria.
Hi, everybody. My name is Victoria Ernst. I live in McMinnville, obviously. I lived here for three years. I grew up in Newburgh and I joined the Budget Committee last year.
All right, thank you. I think that's everybody that's on the line right now. We're next going to be going into comments from community members, just as a point of clarification. We have two public comment periods over the course of the evening. This public comment period is meant to be for this specially-called Budget Committee meeting. And then this evening at 7 o'clock, or after we begin our 7 o'clock regularly-scheduled meeting, we'll also have our normal public comment there, which would be, we would be grateful if we were able to silo the two different public comments so that this body is really keeping the conversation and thoughts focused on Fire District and what's before us right now. With that, we will, of course, hear comments from any community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter of litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the Raise Your Hand function. And once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may also send a chat directly to the city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, who will announce you. And if you're in the audience, we have public sign-up forms, which can also be given to Claudia. Do we have anybody signed up so far?
Yes, we'll start with Margaret Cross.
Hi, my name's Margaret Cross. I live at 1102 Southwest Russell Lane in McMinnville. And you can probably hear me okay. I've been following this issue and I'm generally supportive of it, but in the course of trying to rip apart the budget and follow all the way you're looking at it, I had a couple of comments. One is just a general bookkeeping comment, very general. When the next budget comes out, would it be possible to pageinate the budget and also index it so you don't have to scroll through page after page to get to the category that you're looking for? And that's a very general comment. My comment about what you're looking at tonight, I read through the packet, and even though I read it several times, it wasn't exactly clear to me exactly how much money is left if this special district is created of discretionary funds. I know that you have things like purse commitments and bond repayments, and those things are not discretionary. Those have to be done. But it wasn't clear to me exactly what the dollar amount you're looking at for the total discretionary. So if you could address that in the course of the evening, that would be really great. And thirdly, I was wondering if there's any possibility that the Federal Infrastructure Act is going to be helpful to us in any way. It looks like much of that goes to smaller, even more rural communities, but because you're looking at the district, I don't know. It's just a question that I had as to what kind of federal help we're going to be looking at over the next five years through things like the Infrastructure Act. And with that, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Mike Morris.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Committee. My name is Mike Morris. I live at 935 Northwest 19th Street, McMinnville, Oregon. First of all, I'd like to say that I am in support of the formation of the new Fire District. I believe the number-one priority needs to be the passing of the district, or the whole discussion of what we do with the additional $1.50 per thousand is all for naught. I believe we need to place ourselves in the best possible position to pass this measure, and I feel like deciding not to collect the available $1.50 initially does that. I would like to see the city hold off for at least one year prior to collecting those funds for two reasons. One, it provides the best opportunity to pass the measure, and secondly, it gives the city and the Budget Committee at least one full year to realize the impact of the projected $2.3 million collected via the city service fee. This will give all of you the chance to see what the real numbers look like and then make an educated decision on how much, if any, of that $1.50 needs to be collected to deliver the level of service the citizens are asking for. Lastly, about nine months ago, Mayor Drabkin, you and I spoke by phone on a sunny Saturday morning, and I was out for a walk with Kim, and you told me we would look at forming a task force to look at long-term funding solutions for the city, how those impact and the impact they had on residents and businesses. I hope you are still considering that task force. Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Beerly.
Mark Beerly, 2729 Northwest Riesling Way in McMinnville. You hire a contractor to remodel your kitchen, or you take your car to a mechanic to have a brake job done. Contractor doesn't show up. The mechanic never gets around to doing the brake job, so you hire another contractor, you take your car to another mechanic, they do the work, you pay them, you're done. Then you get a bill from the first contractor or the original mechanic for the work course that they didn't do. You wouldn't expect to pay it. You've been billing city residents for providing fire and ambulance services. If the consolidation is approved, someone else now will be providing those services and, of course, billing for them, and they'll be paid. You're not passing your money through to the Fire District, the new Fire District, so you need to stop collecting that money from the city residents. It's not that complicated. You're not providing the services anymore, so why are you collecting the money for them? Your taxing authority needs to be reduced by the $1.50 a thousand to reflect that you no longer have these expenses. You're not providing the services. I've heard the rationalization, but the city needs the money. And I don't know. Maybe it does, but that's not really your decision. That's the voters' decision whether to raise their taxes by $1.50 a thousand. The next time the city's short of money, are you going to tell the library, "Go create your own funding district"? And oh, by the way, we're going to keep the money that we're spending on the library that we're not paying anymore? Or are you going to tell the parks, "Go find your own money, form your own district, and we'll keep that money"? There's been the discussion or the proposal about, well, we won't collect it for a year or two, like the last speaker mentioned, but that's not the issue. The issue's not when to collect it, it's whether you should be collecting it at all.
You're out of time, sir. If you could conclude your thoughts. Thank you.
I'd like to make one other comment about the survey. There were several references about free money. I don't know if that was inadvertent or on purpose, but I can assure you folks, you might think the money's free, but it certainly isn't free of the taxpayers who have to earn it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beerly.
Next, we have Kim Morris.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Kim Morris, and I live at 935 Northwest 19th Street. And I just had a couple of things. First of all, I was concerned that we would collect the tax rate plus continue the city service fee. I feel like for having both, that's a significant amount of more money than we were thinking. You know, if it's $2.3 million, I believe that's more than what we thought our deficit was to have our services. And then including the tax rate, if we take that, it's another $4 million. That is a lot of money for us to just take at this point. I feel like we need to take some time to look at it and either delete the service fee and take the tax rate. But whatever we do, I feel the voters need to be part of that decision, and I think this is a little premature to make that decision. We need to see what we truly have to spend. And on a personal note, when it is time to decide that budget, and if there's money now, I feel like we need to add money to our municipal court and law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Todd Godfrey.
I'll keep it short, as some of the other folks have covered some of the topics I wanted to touch on today, but Todd Godfrey, 20475 Southwest Christensen Road, McMinnville. I'm also the union president of our local firefighters' union here, and I'm tasked as part of the executive group that is working on the campaign for the Fire District. Like you've heard tonight, a lot of the comments that we've gotten back in some of the presentations that we've given have revolved around money. I'm not going to complicate that factor tonight, but I do want to put out a little bit of urgency to all of you tonight as you're making your decisions. Currently, we're sitting at about six weeks until voter pamphlet information is needed to be put in. If we were to delay a decision passed tonight, that puts us to about three weeks without some sort of a special meeting. So that's really kind of narrowing our gap. Having not had much experience in the political game and putting a lot of things in voter pamphlets, I'm being told that three weeks is a pretty short timeline and will require a lot of extra work. So I wanted to put that out to everybody, that hopefully we can come up with a decision this evening and move forward from here, and then we can help with some of the messaging on some of the financial things that people have questions about. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's everyone. Would have anybody else in the gallery like to make public comment this evening? Would anybody on Zoom like to make public comment this evening? All right, wonderful. Well, thank you all for being here, and I'd like to now call on our finance director, Jennifer Koyar, to introduce the topic.
Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. And please, out there on Zoom, let me know if you're not hearing me or any one of the members of the Budget Committee as we have our conversation this evening. It's so important that for the public record and for the folks who are joining us on Zoom or who might later be watching this to capture what we're saying into the microphone. As a non-microphone kind of person, I need those kinds of reminders. So this evening, we have three topics that we can talk about. One is the question of priorities of how to spend any additional revenues. Secondarily is the timing in terms of rolling it out over the next several years. And then third, we had had on the list to talk about what a public engagement strategy around these kinds of details might look like. And I think, given the nature of, you know, the ground that we covered last week and just conversations that I've been having in the meantime, I guess I would like to suggest that first we go to the topic of timing and what people, where people are landing in terms of, you know, perhaps a three-year strategy of, you know, some kind of phasing in or even longer, just those kinds of things. And then depending on where consensus seems to be leading us, that will inform how urgent the conversation on what to spend any dollars for the next fiscal year, certainly, you know, that would have a great bearing on that. So I don't have, you know, a magical suggestion of how to kind of get that out there, but in terms of your thinking on that. But what do folks think? Does that seem like the better order to tackle timing and phasing first?
Well, yes, and especially because there was really, even though we didn't take a vote on it, there was general consensus at the last meeting. Everybody was looking in the same direction, which was essentially to look at a one-plus timeframe, one-year-plus timeframe out. Unless anybody wants to say so to the contrary at this moment and say, "No, you are misrepresenting us," I think everybody was moving in that direction. So we've kind of established at a minimum a one-year delay, and I think getting into that nitty-gritty of timing beyond that would be an appropriate first step. Great to start with something that everybody's generally in agreement on.
Okay, so what do folks think?
So are you kind of done with teeing up the conversation part of it, then?
Yeah.
The one additional item Jennifer did talk about, public engagement strategy. We're not looking for the group to design that strategy tonight. Certainly, any conversations you'd like to have about the, sort of, the important goals or components of that strategy, we would entertain that conversation. And we also have Jake from Praxis on the line, who can either answer questions or sort of reflect his perspective about any of the conversations that you have. There's Jake. Wave at Jake on the Zoom.
Wonderful. Well, I think we can just go, we can start just by going around the table and by Zoom and getting people's initial thoughts out. I feel like I started on this side last time, but the table's also been mixed. So I just, Sal, I don't want to, or Counselor Peralta, I don't want to put you in the position of going first twice, if that's what I'm doing.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor. I think my first question is, what would be the rules governing any delay in implementation of the $1.50? Meaning that, you know, let's imagine a scenario where the Fire District passes, then what is required of us in terms of technical details going from A to B with that delay?
Well, so part of, as you'll recall, it's usually not a big part of what we're talking about at the Budget Committee meetings, but you end up doing two things in that final motion. One is you will be approving a budget for final appropriation and you're levying a tax amount, both the permanent rate, which is the $5.02, and the amount needed to cover bond issuances that have already been approved by the voters. So the technical component is when you all determine how much, if any, of that $1.50 you'd want to put towards FY24 activities next fiscal year, we would levy the tax rate that corresponds to that level. So if it is indeed ends up being zero, then it would be, gosh, what's the math, $3.52 is what we would levy, and then the assessor will take that information and only levy that amount within the borders of the city of McMinnville. And it's year to year. So every year this happens, and then the Budget Committee that gets together, which, given the election's timing, there won't be another election of council, right, in the interim. There will likely be two members of the Budget Committee, the community members, who might turn the next year, but it's largely the same group of folks will be here, you know, in May of 2024, talking about year two without a Fire District in the scenario that it's passed. And then you could change that amount. It could be $3.75 or $4.15. Just, it can't be more than the $5.02.
So just to conclude, the City Council has the authority to levy anything up to $5.02? Okay. Without a further vote, other than just by the council?
Well, actually, the Budget Committee sets the tax levy.
But the City Council then has to pass it?
The Budget, so once the Budget Committee approves the tax levy, that's how much taxes are levied. The council, then, through the budget adoption process, decides how much of that you spend. So you can actually reduce the amount of expenditures, but you wouldn't have an impact on the taxes levied by the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Budget Committee member Cunningham.
Yeah. I think it's fairly clear from the conversation that we had last week and the public comment that we have had in front of us today, that, yes, pausing until year one at minimum on whether we're using any or all of the $1.50, I think, is prudent. I also think after my conversations in my orientation class yesterday, is that learning or getting to know what this next budget could look like, and the fact that cost of goods or cost of services will have gone up over this last year, so our core payments will have to go up in order to give the same level of service that we're giving today, or cuts would have to be made, that hopefully the city services fee will cover all of those, the costs going up, and then will give us the chance to really look at the next budget cycle to make sure that we are giving our citizens the services that they're really demanding these days. So I think that's where I'm at. I think part of the rest of the conversation when we get to it is I think we truly just look at what that levy could go to pay for and what we feel like would be best spent, whether that is going to be investment in the deferred facilities, or I think next clearly would be the core services packages.
Thank you. And if people have opinions about implementation timeline beyond just not sooner than one year as well, please add those comments as you're going along, because that more specific type of direction is what we're hoping to achieve this evening. That way, we have that ability that was mentioned in public comment to communicate clearly with the citizens the intent of the city before they cast their votes. Thank you. Counselor Payne.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Counselor Peralta was kind of alluding to this, but if the tax levy is not used within 12 months, does it have a kind of a use it or lose it?
Well, I mean, it does in the sense that if you don't levy it, you can't use it for that year. But so if there was, you know, if the big one happened, we couldn't like go back and say, "Oh, no, we need the whole amount," or a different amount. So from that perspective, it's use it or lose it. But it doesn't, it's not like our permanent rate changes. The permanent rate, I mean, they really mean it. It's permanent. But you always have the option to under-levy.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation, Mayor, to make comments about the timing of it. I would, I think Jake kind of alluded to, I believe it was Jake, last meeting, kind of alluded to that two-year window being sort of odd timing and kind of a lull and what happens next. So I would be hesitant to wait beyond a year, you know, maybe more like beyond 18 months for an implementation, because I understand that things need to kind of reconcile and roll out at a pace level. That said, I don't think going two years or more would benefit the citizens or the budget.
Thank you. Counselor Minkie.
Based on comments made last week and from what I've seen at attending various presentations by the Fire Chief and Todd and Adam, I feel like we should probably not assess the first year. If the district goes, we should not assess for the first year. After that, I think we should assess in 50 cent increments for the next three years. Yeah, three years. So 50 cents first year, $1 the next year, and $1.50 the third year after that. In other words, four years altogether.
Thank you, Counselor Minkie. Chair Hart.
First, I'd like to thank the people who came out and gave public comment. As I mentioned, I've been on the public, been on the Budget Committee for a long time, and this may be the most public input that we have ever received. So, and I think that indicates one thing that the citizens are interested, and the public engagement is pretty important on this, because it's really going to determine whether or not the Fire District is created. And also, there's a big issue here of the credibility of the City Council, I think, in terms of any commitment that, or the commitment of the Budget Committee. Any decision we make, we need to keep, you know, Jennifer mentioned that theoretically we could, in year two, all have collective amnesia and forget what our commitment was and do whatever at that point. Well, that would be, of course, one of the colossal mistakes that a Budget Committee could ever make. I am, you know, I hadn't made up my mind, but hearing the comments of the folks on to the right of me, I think that it would be very wise to commit to not levying the $1.50 for the first year. I think the Budget Committee and the council needs to, one, do that in order to maintain credibility, but also, you know, make that commitment and... credibility, but also, you know, make that commitment and make people aware that we are going to be, we're going to approach this issue of how to utilize the $1.50 in a very responsible way. And I'm also mindful of the fact that in the upcoming budget, we will have the benefit of money coming in through the city services charges, and so I just, I think that's the appropriate way to go. Oh, I'm not ready to, I haven't really thought through on years two and three, whether that's something that we should make a decision on. I'm focusing in on the first year at this point.
Thank you. Committee Member Mason.
From our prior meeting, I was persuaded by the council president's arguments about the viability of the proposal, and I think its viability is the most important near-term and perhaps long-term consequence. In today's world, modernization and proper staffing for emergency services and fire services, it's an ever-changing world, and we need to be showing the way to get that for our community. Secondly, and I don't want to get overly legalistic on any of this, but we're here today, and most of us will be here next year, but long-term, it will be the council and the Budget Committee who are in those positions in those years. So, I would support the, doing the best we can to not use any of the margin that would be going toward the district, with one exception, and that is, we really all need to be thoughtful about existing shortcomings or deficits, and not allow them to, to any holes, to become the deeper hole, so that we are keeping the pace up with other services than these emergency services, if that, we deem, if we deem that essential. So, I'm in favor of the one-year hiatus, and I'm in favor of the public participation and review for the second year, and the same process probably going in succeeding years for a while, because that's, I mean, we know that there's supposed to be public participation in budget process, but this is an interesting variation on everyday themes, so I think we need to be conscious of that as we go forward.
Thank you. Council President Garvin.
Thank you, Mayor. As with last meeting, I'd still be in favor of pausing it for the initial year, fiscal year '24, and not collecting any of that $1.50 for the city, which would still equate to a 50-cent increase for the taxpayers for their additional fire service, and then bringing that $1.50 back on over a three-year transition at 50 cents per year, so like Counselor Menke spoke to. Your fiscal year '24 would be nothing to the city, fiscal year '25 would be 50 cents additional, so we'd be at 402, and then go into 452, and then back to 502, which brings on roughly about $1.7 million in those later three years each year, and I think that that gives the Fire District the best chance of success with this May vote. It also gives us the runway to fully engage the public through a public outreach, which I think is very important as well for the success of the Fire District, and not making decisions tonight specifically to exactly how that money's going to be spent, partially because I don't think we've done enough engagement on what that should be spent on, and the second notion to that would be to what Committee Member Mason just spoke to, is the legality of that, and what Jennifer spoke to, is every year the Budget Committee adopts that taxing authority, and so let's lay out the roadmap through our engagement process, but I think it would be short-sighted and just not in the best interest of public transparency to make promises tonight that we can't legally keep.
Thank you. Counselor Gary.
Thank you. I'll just echo Counselor Menke's and Counselor, Council President Garvin's framework for that and support that. I agree that best play for the future of the city is getting the district launch and setting the city up for success for many, many years to come, and if the best chance of that is a four-year roadmap with zero being collected of the $1.50 and 50 cents each year, I would support that. I also think an enemy of this whole process, as it is in a lot of instances, especially when we go to the voters, is a lack of clarity, and I think while we can't bind future groups, I think laying out a 50-cent-a-year roadmap is super helpful and super imperative, and then what that also does is allows, as we go out to the public for engagement on what to invest in, allows us to create actual, a menu of choices that we can fill in with citizen input on sort of, you know, criminal justice, mental health, you know, crime prevention, parks and services, more days for the library. We can equate 50 cents to a day, eight hours at the library, two police officers, eight mower, we can equate that better. What was, what was super impactful for me in last meeting was 62 cents to create a sustainable facilities savings account for the city, which is nearly half of the $1.50 we're playing with. It's like, you know, again, you take someone through the grocery store, and they're going to throw everything in the cart, but the 50 cents a year allows us to build a menu of affordable options and affordable choices that we can, we can actually do these things for the 50 cents apiece, and so I would support a roadmap that's a four-year phase-in with zero being the first, and the next three years, 50 cents a year, and building a menu of choices around what that actual dollar of value would be, and getting the citizens' input for it.
Thank you. Counselor Gennewith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just for a little bit of bookkeeping, last week I quoted, or last meeting I quoted a number that I said was about 15,900 hookups for Mack Water and Light, and then from that calculated that using $1.50 add-on, which is actually a $2 add-on, the average household was looking at a $550 increase. I was then told that I was using that information, so I contacted Mack Water and Light to verify what that information really was, and found that the hookups that are receiving the city services fee are not 17,500, they're not 15,900, they're 14,453. So, my numbers were actually low on average, not high on average, so I just want to clarify that for the record. Second, I am really concerned how this is, again, I've said this, but I'm going to say it again, I'm concerned how this is going to play out when we're going to the voters after already assessing the city services fee, that is $2.3 million, not $1.4 million that we discussed at the DICE, and then we're going to follow that up, saying we're taking another 4.8 million, and we're talking about how we want to spend that, after they told us in the survey that 84% satisfied with the services we're currently providing, which is an astounding percentage of people, are happy with what we're currently doing. Now, they don't know about our buildings that are falling down, they don't know about the maintenance that we've forestalled that needs to be taken care of. What they do know is the services they're receiving, and based on the services they're receiving, they're satisfied very well in our community. When we come to them and then say, we want another $7.1 million, or we're taking a total $7.1 million for more services, when they're satisfied, I'm concerned how this is going to play. As I mentioned, the entire poll was done before the city service fee was levied, so we don't even have a clear picture of where the voters are at today. I think we need to be cognizant of that. Having said all that, I would agree with forestalling for a year, if we're going to do this. I would disagree with setting an arbitrary 50 cent per year for the next three years after that. I think we need to have engagement to see what the citizens actually want. I think we need to understand where they're coming from. I think if we contractually confine by making a promise to our voters, and then, as our chair so eloquently put it, we don't follow through because we change our mind, or because there's a change in makeup and the vote changes, we're setting ourselves up for even more problems down the road, whereas if we just say we're going to stall for a year, and then based on citizen feedback, our intent, we could go with an intent statement, would be to try to phase it in over the three years after that, but we will wait and see where the citizens are coming from. I think that's a more reasonable and safer position to go into, so we're not putting ourselves into jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee Member Wani.
Thank you, Mayor. As my first meeting officially, I'm so glad that I am at the last, so I could hear everybody else's comments. I'm concerned about credibility versus fiscal responsibility. Committee Member Mason touched on this briefly. If we pass totally on this and be very wishy-washy, so to speak, about bringing it back in, our fiscal responsibility then could be in danger too. Vehicles, lump sum payments, the money that has been cut from the budgets over the last couple of years from shortfalls, where does this all stop? Now, we have a credibility issue with rolling this forward with the Fire District, so in a way to get that passed, we're walking away from $1.5 per thousand. The reason we're doing that is to get something else passed. One year from now, it's, if we say, oh yeah, we're going to throw in 50 cents, how far is that going to get us? I'm concerned about the fiscal responsibility, and the fact that if somebody gets hurt when a building crashes down, where are we at then? So, I would agree to walk away from the 1.5, but I'm not so sure any kind of phase-in will be palatable to the public, and we need to definitely bring this forward. The cost benefits on a lump sum payment to the PERS system has a great return, and some of those things need to be explained in detail. And how do we get that information out to the public? Today, I can't tell you. Newspapers don't work, Facebook's gone, Twitter, who knows, but we need to definitely spend time in, maybe it's the task force, in getting people schooled on what the city is really looking at. They're happy with the services they're receiving, but the reality is, some of our equipment's 15 years old that should have been replaced five years ago, always a concern. So, with that said, I will accept the 1.5 walkaway this year, but I have no idea what we're going to be able to do next year and the year after. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee Member Maxfield.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I fully support the Fire District, and it appears that not levying the $1.50 the first year is key. I feel strongly about fully funding our core services, building up our reserves, and no longer deferring maintenance, and I assume these will still remain my top priorities in a year from now. I really appreciate the comments that were just made by the new Budget Committee member, I'm not sure his name, but fiscal responsibility is very important to me. So, while I hear everyone wanting the 50 cent slow implementation over the next three years, I can accept that, but I agree that we might need to just assess it in a year from now and see where we're at, because we might need more than 50 cents next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Committee Member Ernst.
Thank you. I agree with what's, a lot of what's been said. I think getting the Fire District passed is the most important part right now, and I think that it makes sense to wait to levy that $1.50, you know, especially based off of the comments we heard tonight, the comments that we heard last year with the city services charge too, hopefully, that gives the economy time to get a little bit better, so that people can be in a better position for this, because as Council President Garvin mentioned, there will be a 50 cent increase next year for the folks that are in the city anyway. But I also agree with what's been said, that especially the deferred facility maintenance, and I think too, the core services add packages, which 67 cents is what I saw for deferred facility maintenance of that $1.50 average of what it would be, of what's necessary per year, and then I calculated it would be about 44 cents for the core services add packages, so, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd want all the core services to be at base at least as soon as possible, but I think we also have a responsibility to listen to the people that are paying for this, and make sure that we're doing it in a responsible way that allows us to do more in the future, because all of the budget issues aren't necessary to fix, so, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Gary.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something I heard. It was a reference to the survey, 84% residents are very satisfied with quality of life, and it was 56% of residents rate our operations as a city government as pretty good. I think it was the 84% was referenced as the services satisfaction.
Thank you for that correction.
Thank you, and I also want to clarify, in our last meeting, I referenced the state of our buildings, and I said our buildings were failing, and that was a overstatement, and not, not to say that our facilities assessment hasn't shown that we have serious problems with many of our buildings, and we do, especially as, germane to the conversation, the fire station, and as we've talked about, the Public Works Building that's, was supposed to be a temporary facility that's been in use for 20 years and has significant repair issues, but I have heard that language repeated tonight of our buildings are falling down, and I am sorry that I introduced that language, because I don't want to misrepresent the state that we're in. We have serious facility needs coming up, we have serious facility needs right now, but I also don't want to paint a picture of something that's not accurate, so apologize for introducing that language, and I think it's an important thing for us to keep in mind, how do we maintain our buildings, how do we fix our buildings, and how do we do preventative maintenance, and I don't want to give, and I don't want to, and the sky, and I don't want to imply that the sky is, the ceilings are literally going to fall down on our heads at any moment, so my apologies for that. Additional comments?
Is Member Ernst still on the line? You haven't called on her yet.
I just did.
Did we get Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I do have an email from Member Harmon Ferry that she sent before she had to log off. I'd like to read that into the record for the...
Yes, please.
So, I'll read this email from Debbie Harmon Ferry, and then I'll submit it to the city recorder to be part of the packet. Jeff, just a reminder that I am double-booked tonight, I have Zoom with prospective Linfield parents from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. I probably have to jump on and get started at 5:45. I concur with most everything stated in the letter sent by Mark Davis. I hope the Fire District passes, and it is clear to me what services will be improved for the additional 50 cent per thousand. I think the city should under-levy and phase in over a period of a few years. It is not clear to me what the priorities are, and what I can tell the average citizen they would be getting slash noticing for the extra $1.50 per thousand. Until we can articulate that, I think we should be careful about moving forward with that much more in money collected. I think that the next step would be to take stock of what we most need in the city and to develop a PR plan to let folks know now, that, let folks we know have a way to bring those things about best. Debbie Harmon Ferry, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, I'm going to summarize what I've heard from the... So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to summarize what I've heard from the members of the committee. They unanimously agree on no implementation of, or no, we wouldn't be taxing for the first year period. So, so that came across quite clearly. I haven't quite tallied this yet, but we are, it seems there's some split between no additional intention of using our taxing authority, wanting to use it within no more than two years, a three-year phased-in approach, and potentially fully funding in the second year. So I'll, I'll divvy those up in one second, but I do want to say the other thing that I heard unanimously was that everybody is very, finds it very important that we have a robust community engagement plan over the next year following the fire district vote in May. I think that was universal as well. Counselor Peralta.
Just one observation on the choices in front of us, which is that, you know, we can plan to phase something in, in a year or three years and kind of state that intention, but we really practically don't have the ability to bind our future selves to that. So, you know, while it is important to kind of state the intentions, I also, and maybe share a game plan here in a public meeting, I also think maybe that's not necessarily as critical, you know, as reaching the decisions we need to for this year's budget.
Thank you. Counselor Menke.
And as I've listened around, I, I appreciate your comments, because it's true. Things could change radically in two years or something like that. However, at this point in time, I, I really feel like if we're going out and presenting this to the public, we have to be very clear about what our intentions are currently. And it really helps people to understand that there'll be a phase-in, we're going to approximately levy 50 cents a year after the first year. It helps them pull it together. I know the guys came and presented to my Rotary group, and my, my Rotary group was, they were the first group to, to have listened to them, and, you know, it was a good presentation, but they're much better now. My husband was among the naysayers, extremely hard. But when I, but Adam's presentation last week, I, I went back, I explained the whole thing to him, and I showed him what RSS value is, and explained all that to him, and he, he thought that sounded pretty reasonable. I think the surety of knowing at least this is what we think should happen, and people are listening to us, and if they can see, you know, some give on our part and see a progression, they feel much more confident about us following through.
Just to complete my thought, if I may.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I just, I just wanted to say, I, my perception is that, thank you, Mayor. My perception is that there's probably a consensus in the group to not tax the additional money in the first year, and to lay out a plan for if we decide to tax something in year two, here's what that plan is going to look like, here's what the intention is. That's my sense of, of, of the room overall.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Sal, thank you. You did a very good job of expressing much better what I was trying to say, and I think that's, you're spot on. I, I think that, I think going to the voters and saying to them, we're going to wait a year to assess anything, and in that year, we're going to seek public engagement on how you want us to move forward, even if we say in the second year, we're thinking X amount, but I don't even think that's necessary. I think you're still making a very clear statement of your intent when you say, we're doing nothing for a year, and we're going to look for your opinion before we do anything. I think that's a very clear message being sent to the voters, and one that they'll understand.
Thank you. Chair Hart.
I agree with that comment. I think that's, I think that's a good way to proceed, because if we get, and I think this was brought up by, I'm sorry, the pollster's name, I forget his name. JL. Okay. That if, if things get too complicated, well, actually, this was brought out in Martin Davis's letter as well, that if you get, start getting too complicated, number one, it's confusing, and number two, it makes whatever you do in the future more difficult. So I, I like that approach.
Thank you. Okay, so, let me ask you this, is that kind of sufficient direction? As Counselor Chenoweth said, we're going to do nothing for one year, and then we want to hear what the public wants us to do with the dollars going forward. We also have unanimously, I think, stated that the viability of the district is the most important thing to this body, and those are, those are our three high points. Nothing for one year, viability of the district is more important than all else, and a community engagement plan going forward. Do you need more than that from the budget committee?
From a, from a timing perspective, no. That, that clarifies things perfectly for next year, and so we'll, we'll build in whatever resources, additional resources might be needed for public engagement activities during, during the year, and we will, we'll, we'll see in, in a few weeks how things, the, the actual cost of, of goods and services that we anticipate to be in a year, how, how the chips fall.
Thank you. Committee member Maxfield.
I have a question for Jake from Praxis. I wondered if he wanted to weigh in on if we need a plan for the future years, if he thought that would do better for the voters, or if just saying we're going to, we aren't going to levy the taxes for a year, and then we're going to have city, uh, community engagement. I just wanted to hear his thoughts.
Hi, everybody. For the folks who haven't had a chance to meet me, my name is Jake Weigler. I'm a consultant with Praxis Political. Been working with the fire department in the city for a number of months. We helped design the survey and kind of shepherd the process through, so really happy to take that question. You know, when I look at this polling data, there's a couple of things that really stand out. One is, you know, whether you present the question as, should we wait one year, or should we kind of take that three-year stair-step approach? Both are supported by the voters. You know, you see that it makes, you know, a little north of 40% for each of them more likely to support the measure, to kind of have that confidence in that delay. But ironically, I think what matters even more is having voice in the process. You know, over 50%, 53.8% said having that community engagement process where the public is heard and valued in the conversation is what's important. So, I think in terms of the polling, you know, what I'm seeing, which, you know, is the best kind of representation of public attitudes on this that we have, what I see is that what's on the table right now with that one-year pause, which could translate into a stair-step process, you know, after that first year, or could be, you know, we've done a substantive process, and here's how we're going to, you know, decide to move forward with this, with this spending. I think both are acceptable, and having the two pieces of, okay, we are going to have that pause, and more importantly, frankly, that we are going to involve you. This is not just going to be a decision made by staff or by this committee, but it actually will be a give-and-take with the public to try and understand kind of what you would want to prioritize in the conversation. That's what's going to be really critical to kind of giving the public confidence. And, you know, obviously, there's a lot of complexities to designing that community engagement piece. I'm not sure that needs to be fully formed prior to the election, but promising there's a commitment to do so and that that will take place prior to any decision-making about kind of this available funding, I think that's what's clearly going to matter to voters. And I'm happy to follow up, but there's more specifics on that.
Counselor President Garvin.
Yeah, Jake, thank you for that. My follow-up to that would be, do you have ideas for community engagement and how we could engage the community in a, in more in-depth way than just polling or public meeting open houses, like focus groups or things of that nature?
Absolutely, yeah. And, you know, I think to design a really good program probably is more time than we have today, but I would love to kind of give a few high points, maybe to help you all start to think about what that would look like. So, you know, in my experience, you're trying to get two things out of those community engagement conversations. One is for people to feel like their participation was meaningful. I feel like if people give you information or share their perspective, and then it feels like that wasn't valued, it actually has a negative impact, because they say, well, next time, why would I even waste my time? Because it wasn't important to the conversation. That, of course, has to be balanced by the task that you all are very familiar with, which is then you have to take all that different input, synthesize it, looking at the realities of the budget and the operations work, which, you know, the public may have a high-level understanding of, but certainly aren't in the details the way you all are. And then think about a process that takes that input and moves it forward into some substantive decisions, because, you know, I'm, I'm from Portland, don't hold it against me, but I think, you know, we are a poster child for having a lot of process here that doesn't get to that endpoint, and you see that frustration across the board from stakeholders of just, okay, you know, we did this process, it was great to have community engagement, but, you know, what's, where did the rubber hit the road, and how do we move forward? So, you know, that's the really high level. Now, to your question, Counselor, I think there are some things you could do beyond kind of just having a survey available on the website, that, you know, we don't know how many people completed, and also, you know, you don't understand if that's a truly representative sample from the public. I think we recognize that some folks are more likely to engage in that kind of a conversation than others, and you really want to be able to try and gather the breadth of opinion from the public. So, you know, what I would say in an ideal world is a kind of a two-step process, where you might think about it as kind of in school, there was like the open-ended question, and then there was the multiple-choice question. And so, the first part is trying to solicit from different stakeholders, and that could be, you know, an online survey. You can also sometimes send out postcards, ask people to either return it, or you can put a URL or a QR code that makes them, easy as they can scan it on their phone and respond. You can even do phone surveys, like what we already did in this case. You could even offer incentives, you know. I discovered one from City Portland that offered an opportunity to tour the wastewater treatment plant, which I thought was a fairly unusual construction of an opportunity, but, you know, you can think about something that might be more exciting to the public there to kind of motivate people. We can definitely talk about community meetings, maybe even exploring focus groups, like you say, you know, if there are particular parts of the community that may be harder to engage intentionally, trying to reach out and try and have some conversations with them, and using all that information, I think, then to come back to the city and to yourselves to kind of say, we have a lot here. How do we synthesize that into some concrete choices for the folks? You know, that multiple-choice part of the conversation of, okay, now we're going to narrow the aperture and look at some specific choices to put in front of you, so you can say A, B, C, D, or none of the above, and then that lets you get to the end of the process, saying, you know, we balance kind of trying to hear from the community and then understanding how to actually make that operationally work for, for the city. So, that'd be my really high overview. I hope that's really helpful. If not, I'm happy to continue to talk.
No, that's great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other thoughts, comments, concerns? Counselor Chenoweth.
Well, first, I'd like to say, having toured our wastewater facility, it may not sound like a great opportunity, but it was really pretty cool. Second, I'd like to say, on the community engagement process, I, I would strongly urge that we undertake that as soon as possible after the successful passage of the redistricting. It, it shouldn't be wait a year and do it. It should be, we immediately are following up the vote with the beginning of whatever that looks like.
Excellent. That process is underway. Our city manager has already been presenting different community engagement tools in our weekly leadership meetings to start for consideration, so none of them fully fleshed out yet, but it's a conversation that's happening so that we can be prepared to run out, to roll out, rather, with community, in a community engagement plan. Committee member Cunningham.
Yeah, I'd second what Chris said, in the sense, and I, I might even push it a little bit more, I think people are going to want to hear that we're listening now, because if they're thinking about passing, you know, the, the fire, they already want to know kind of what we're looking to do with the money in the future, and, and so if there's anything we can do to engage them now, obviously, they're coming and talking to us, but I think they, they want to hear from us as soon as possible, and that we want to hear from them.
Absolutely. Those are, I think that those are continuations of the spirit of last week's meeting and this week's, this week's meeting as well, and absolutely, I hear that loud and clear, and absolutely, we will treat that as a priority. Okay. Any additional comments? Okay, not hearing any. Thank you, everybody, for coming and for your time, and we will now close the Budget Committee, the special-called Budget Committee meeting of January 24th, 2023. Thank you. And if you'd all like to stay, we have a regularly scheduled council meeting at 7:00, and we'd love your attendance.
Just waiting for the clock to strike seven in order to follow the letter of the law.
Okay, good evening. Nice to see you all here. Thank you for coming. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the McMinnville City Council for our January 24th, 2023 meeting. We'll now begin the meeting at 7:00 PM. Call the meeting to order and ask our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, to do a roll call.
Good evening.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counselor President Garvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you. And I'd like to call on Counselor Peralta to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we jump into the business of the council this evening, as you all know, you wrote and you're here this evening, I want to take a few moments to address the letters, the numerous letters, but also the letter that was signed by over 300 community members that the council received on or around December 13th, 2022. I want to thank you for your letters, and I want to thank you for your participation to start. And I also want to state very clearly that you have a partner in me and a partner in the city of McMinnville. Like many who signed that letter, I was born here, raised here, went to college here, and I've operated my business here. I've lived here almost my entire life. I love McMinnville. And I too am very concerned about the increases we have seen in both crime-related activities and mental and behavioral health issues in our downtown core and beyond. I too want to reclaim the downtown and our downtown core and beyond. I too want to reclaim the downtown and ensure safety on our streets and in our neighborhoods. And I too agree that solutions will take robust community participation and partnerships. The letter signed by those 300 community members closed by asking for a commitment from the city. Here is my commitment to you: to proactively maintain a no trespass with the railroad. We now have one in place for this year and have just confirmed the railroad will proactively sign one with us for next year. Counsel President and I have also met with the railroad today to continue the conversation about our overall community needs. Full enforcement of our camping ordinances with an officer assigned to patrolling problem areas. Ask the courts to use our exclusion zones to their fullest extent to keep repeat offenders out of commercial areas. To create a safety and resiliency program for the city of McMinnville. The bridge program will allow the city to hire mental health professionals to partner with the police department. The program will allow us to deploy the correct resources. Officers can focus on crimes while specialists respond to mental and behavioral health problems and create the bridge to county and other social service organizations. Partner with the Oregon Mayors Association in their funding ask of the state legislature for direct allocations to all cities suffering from this endemic. If successful, this is one way we will fund the bridge program. Continue to promote the fire district. And if successful, ensure the budget committee understands that I advocate for the city directing more of those funds towards public safety and parks cleanup. Maintain oversight of our downtown. While we do not have the budget available to have an officer assigned downtown, I have long advocated for Visit McMinnville to find creative and legal ways to use their funds in conjunction with city demands that our budget cannot bear. We expect the Visit McMinnville Board to move forward with an ambassador program that would direct visitors but also provide eyes on the street to deter littering, deter smoking, and bad behavior in general, and to be able to call the police or the county's behavioral response team when an incident is occurring. Work closely with our county on short and long-term solutions, as they are the governing body receiving state and federal financial resources to treat mental, behavioral health, and addiction problems. And also, they are the governing body with mental health, addiction, and jail services located downtown. Promote the county's crisis management team and state our support to grow this program, supporting our colleagues in health and human services until we have adequate responders for the issues that we're facing. Support our partners like Provoking Hope, who sit at every court appearance to help defendants find treatment for substance abuse, and partners like YCAP, who are also developing programming for trained behavioral health responders. And to partner with the county by directing city representation to the county's opioid settlement response corps group. Additionally, while not called out in the widely signed letter, there was a call for an unofficial city task force during the public comment period of the December 13 council meeting. Specified in that ask was that the task force should be run by the community and not the city. I think that's a wise suggestion, a community-run task force. And please let me tell you why. The city must run through strict process. Government values process to ensure its outcomes, good outcomes. If the city were to formally establish a task force, we would first add the decision to a council agenda set at a future date where the council may or may not choose to give staff direction to begin establishing a task force. We would then ask staff, or staff would then begin the process of preparing documents to establish the group by resolution, which would need to include a specific topic, timeframe, ensure broad and varied representation of stakeholders by identifying representatives from roles and from different communities, for example, the business community, service providers, et cetera. And then all of that work would need to be approved by council at a future date. Once established, we would then advertise for the positions and then interview all applicants. And then the interviewing committee would then make a recommendation of appointees to the city council for consideration at a future council meeting. And once appointed, the task force would then present a work plan to the city council for approval before beginning any work. Additionally, as a city-run task force, the group would be subject to all public meeting laws and reporting and recording requirements. The government, the governing process is thorough, but it is also lengthy. A community-led task force can be more nimble, and the city can still support that group. And these are the ways how. We can provide civic hall during business hours on Mondays, Tuesdays, or Fridays as a meeting place. We can provide a council liaison whose responsibilities will be to attend the community task force meetings, to report to council at council meetings, and to liaison with city leadership and with city staff. Furthermore, in preparation of my response today, I asked our chief of police and our judge to educate me on the legal and other constraints they face in keeping our streets crime-free. And I will prepare the council liaison with all of that information. I considered sharing it here today and figured nobody really wanted to hear it in this setting. Additionally, I met with the county's Health and Human Services Director, also to understand the complexities and the funding mechanisms of their crisis response team, including restrictions they face from the state, options for civil commitments, and understanding the gaps and capacity issues of that system. The council liaison will similarly be prepared with that information to share. I have asked Counselor Geary to serve as the council liaison to the community task force, and I know that he will be prepared. And beyond prepared will come with ideas that might more effectively be run through a community task force than a city task force, and that he will serve the community well in this capacity. I want to thank you all for coming today. I know you may not choose to stay through our whole business meeting. We are happy to have you every time you're here. I've included a lot in this response, and so I'll be sending out the copy of these remarks in our city newsletter next week. So you'll have everything that I have presented today in front of you without it potentially being edited anywhere along the way. So thank you very much. And we're now going to, for our council meeting, we'll have a, thank you. It's, I'm supposed to dissuade clapping. We will have a proclamation. We will then go into comments from community members. We'll then hear advice and information from counselors and department heads. We then have our consent agenda for the evening and two resolutions, I believe. So that will be the course of the evening. Our proclamation this evening is in honor of Black History Month. And designation of February 2023 as Black History Month. Whereas the city of McMinnville is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community, and whereas the official theme of Black History Month 2023 is Black Resistance, examining how African-Americans have fought repression from America's earliest days, from escaping the plantation to the rise out of poverty and the struggle for equal housing and education to the struggle for voting rights, and the resistance lives on even into the 21st century. And whereas Black Americans have made invaluable contributions to Oregon's economic, political, spiritual, and cultural development while maintaining and promoting a unique culture and history. And whereas, we acknowledge and denounce the history of structural and institutional racism towards Black Americans in Oregon and throughout the United States, which has directly resulted in socioeconomic health and other disparities that persist to this day. And whereas, Black Americans have sought ways to nurture and protect lives and for the autonomy of their physical and intellectual bodies through voluntary immigration, nonviolence, education, literature, sports, media, and legislation, legislation, politics. And whereas, Black History Month serves to celebrate the accomplishments of culture and contributions of the Black community while honoring Black history. And whereas, we as a community must work together to end discrimination, to achieve true equality for Black Oregonians, and build a McMinnville where all residents can realize their full potential. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand this 24th day of January in the year 2023. And we will now go into public comments. If you've not already signed up to make a public comment and you'd like to, we have forums that can be given to our city recorder. If you are on Zoom and would like to make public comment, you can do so by using the raise your hand function or sending a direct chat to our city recorder. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. And comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. And with that, Claudia, please.
First up, we have Kim Morris.
Thank you and welcome.
My name is Kim Morris, and I'm here to speak to you. I gave my address earlier because I am the one that asked for the task force at the last meeting on December 13. So first of all, I want to thank Remy, Mayor Drabkin, for your comments, and I appreciate the fact that the city is going to support a task force. I look forward to Zach. And Zach, I hope you can come into this with a very open mind in regards to what we'd like to have the city support us on. One thing that was missed on the list, and I just want to make a note, is the police force and working along with the county jail and the sheriff. So it's not just a city, it goes on into the county as well. So I want to make sure we all work together. I would like to go ahead and agree to run that task force if the community is so okay with that. And if anybody would like to be part of the task force, to reach out to me. Thank you again for your time and your support.
Thank you. Claudia?
Next, we have Susan Newby.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi there. My name is Susan Newby, and just wanted to just shed some light on what a normal citizen in this town has experienced, okay, in the last few years. I've lived in McMinnville for almost 43 years, came to Lynnfield College many years ago, and have become increasingly concerned about the homelessness, crime, and drug activity in this once safe and peaceful city. I love to go on a two-mile run through Joe Dancer Park, down Marsh Lane, Riverside Drive, and Lafayette Avenue back to my house. I take my little dog with me. To do so in the past three years has become what I would consider dangerous. Often, there have been up to 10 or more huge dilapidated RVs parked on Marsh Lane in spite of the no overnight parking signs. The filth in the street, the garbage piling up on the sidewalk, and the people with nothing to do but stare at you as you run past make me feel a bit concerned for my safety. I'm almost 60 years old. I ought to be able to do this, you know. Just yesterday, I saw that someone had stripped their entire outfit off and left it in the street along with a backpack, all that stuff soaking up rain and muck in the, in the, in the street. Not long ago, on a different, this is a different subject, a couple summers ago, a homeless person parked out in front of my home. When my daughter drove out of the driveway on the way to work, the person ducked down in their car, not wanting to be seen. Immediately, my daughter called me on my cellphone, on her cellphone. I had a meeting that day in Portland, and I did not feel comfortable driving away, leaving my home empty, with a homeless person sitting there watching it all and watching me leave. I called the police. It turns out the car was stolen, and there were multiple warrants out for the woman's arrest. Doesn't make you feel that safe. Last summer, my 65-year-old husband, who works at Recology, was simply doing his duty at work. When out of a house, a man came dressed wearing nothing but his shorts and waving what the police had determined was a Danish battle axe at him. He came right up to my husband, brandishing the axe only four inches away from his sternum. He did this twice. When the guy went to court later, for months later, he got off almost scot-free. And the thing that he said to the court that he learned was, I'm going to learn never to mix alcohol and mushrooms again.
You're out of time if you'll conclude your thoughts. Thank you.
I just think that this needs to stop. Normal citizens need to feel safe in our own town.
Thank you very much. Claudia?
That's everyone that signed up.
Okay, would anybody else in the gallery like to provide public comment this evening? Would anybody on Zoom like to provide public comment this evening? All right, thank you so much for coming. We're now go to advice and information items, starting with reports from counselors on their committee and board assignments. And counselors, you have in your packet to start us off, a draft of our city council group agreements. And if everybody has had an opportunity to review these, these should be the group agreements that we came to during our goal-setting weekend. And, and the consensus was that we would formally adopt these on a yearly basis by having each counselor sign the agreements. So before you, are those council agreements for signatures? Claudia, are you going to literally walk them around right now? No, okay. Could I just have a general consensus from the council of their ability to sign on to the group agreements in their packet? Yes. Yes. Yes, yes. Wonderful, thank you. I would ask for a motion to approve the council group agreements.
I move to approve the council group agreement.
Second. I have a motion from Counselor Minkie and a second from Counsel President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those opposed say nay. And wonderfully, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we'll start on my left, Counselor Chenoweth, your report, please.
So the Parkway Committee met, and of course, at this time of the, of the year, the focus is on expanding possibilities for fundraising to bring money into the process, focusing on the interchange at Oregon 219 in Newburgh, and also possibly breaking up what is being called 2A and 2B into possibly 2C and 2D, I think is as far as we've gone so far. We covered all the different ways in which we're looking to raise revenue to try to move that process along, and some of the good news that's come out of it. There was also discussion about money that's been earmarked to what we, most of us know as McDougal Corner, to do some redirect of some of the intersections around McDougal, so they're not all colliding the way they are currently, in the run-up to getting to eventually Section 3 of that bypass. MEVLC met. We established our Chair Carson Benner and Vice Chair Mike Morris, and discussed the current implementation of the Nobel Grant. All of that should be coming shortly before, I don't know, if that comes before us, once we finally get that solidified, but at least announcements will be coming on how that money is going to be allocated.
Thank you very much. Counsel Geary?
DEIAC, I was working on the assessment tool, getting it tuned up and ready for them to be directed to implement that departmentally. In fact, they are so eager, they're adding a work session to their schedule, a meeting again Thursday evening to work through that. We're also We're also recruiting for two members to join the DEIAC. If you or someone you know or love wants to join, please encourage them to do so. The MIRAC has had another meeting postponed, and January meetings pushed off until February 1st. And excited and thankful to see the school district joint session back on calendar for March, so. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Councillor Payne?
Landscap Review met last week, and had an unusually lengthy meeting that is going to be continued. They appointed a new member and appointed a new chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Manke.
YCAP has met, actually three times since I last talked. We have had two finance meetings and a board meeting. Highlights are funding for YOMAC, it's pretty much complete, that's the youth outreach in McMinnville. There's a building that's currently undergoing renovations, and it will be in use well before the end of the year. There's firming up going on in regard to YCAP's position with the turnkey operation, that's the hoteling program. There's plans to go forward and do some additional remodeling and some other things, and it, there's also focus on making this a long-term project. The YCAP audit is nearly completed, looks like it's going to be another very positive thing. We're at an end on the design on Any Door Place, and hopefully we'll be starting on construction. I think it's supposed to be ready February of 2024, if I'm correct on that one. Affordable Housing Committee, we will not be meeting this month because both me and I will be gone. We're at City Days tomorrow. However, the CET Committee is looking for a time to sit down and talk before the next meeting, which will be at the end of February.
Thank you. Councillor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. For council of governments, I'm proud to report that Stratus Village did win the regional, or is going to win the Regional Cooperative Award. I would ask if city staff can, thank you, yeah. We had a lot of partners on that. Housing Authority of Yamhill County was the lead entity, but also Unidos, YCAP, Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde, Yamhill County, the YCCO, Willamette Valley Medical Center, City of McMinnville, and the Willamette Valley Wineries Association. And I would ask if city staff can help do some outreach to the partner organizations that won?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, great. Then, also on COG, I'll just report out that we're currently sitting at a funding table right now with Business Oregon, Department of Ag, and Oregon Community Fund for Economic Development Dollars for planning. So I think that's going to be the next iteration of, of funding that we get for those services. And the Historic Landmarks Committee hasn't met since our last meeting, but does meet on Friday at 4:00.
Thank you very much. And Council President Garvin?
Thank you, Mayor. Airport Commission won't meet until March. Fire District, I'll refer you to your resolution in your packet, 2023-06. We had our second public hearing for the commissioners, who moved that forward to, with a 3-0 vote again. So what we have on our agenda tonight is the last final step before this gets formally filed, and then it's pretty much passed off from city staff, and it's on us to carry that message forward to the voters. So Chief will still be attending some public outreach things with us, more from a fact perspective, but not a campaign messaging perspective. So if you have anybody that reaches out to you about, you know, wanting insight, you as a councillor can provide that, but city staff can't do that while on the clock. YCOM, we haven't met since our last meeting, and Visit McMinnville, Remy briefly touched on it, but the board is moving forward with exploring an ambassador program and kind of like a, a super volunteer coordinator to really collaborate everything that goes on downtown and really try and bring things together there. They won't be a, a mental health case manager or anything like that, but they will be eyes and ears and can obviously make phone calls and make other partner agencies aware of issues downtown. So that should be a help with some of the downtown behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As mentioned, tomorrow, we will be at City Day at the Capitol. This is an opportunity when our representatives and senators gather along with a lot of partner organizations, and there are two functions happening. There's a convention at the convention center of all the partners, and then the legislators are taking meetings in their offices. So we have a large team going from the city that includes both council, council representation and staff. We are dividing into two teams. So we will have one team staying at the convention center to be meeting with partners and talking, and one team going to the Capitol, where I'm pleased to tell you, we have many, many appointments set up with legislators and senators, and we're very pleased about this because we've put together our own set of legislative priorities for the city of McMinnville this year. So we'll be carrying that messaging forward. In addition to that, you may know that on the governor's first day of office, she signed three executive orders. One of them was focused on a homeless state of emergency and deploying funds to counties that had seen an over 50% increase. Unfortunately, during the pandemic, we were not able to, I shouldn't say we, because it's not the city of McMinnville, but the point of, in time count, the data collection for our area was suspended, not by our choice. Because of that, we did not have the data to provide in order to qualify for the emergency order. So I've written a letter to the governor asking that she amend her executive order to include Yamhill County, and I've provided other supportive data to show the massive increases that we have seen here in homelessness, and to advocate that we desperately are in need of the coverage provided by that emergency order as well. So that is additionally in process. And then I wanted to share a Water and Light update with you as well. I previously mentioned the Bonneville Power Administration's recommendation of distribution. They have a reserves distribution clause, and, and so that has gone through. So now Water and Light will be one of the Public Power Associations bringing back a large, a large sum of money. Water and Light's share of these funds, and just so you know, the BPA is giving back $350 million. So Water and Light's share of these funds is approximately $5.65 million, distributed over the next 10 months as bill credits. And of those funds, Cascade Steel would receive about $2.312 million, Air Gas $369,000, and Water and Light itself would keep $2.967 million. Cascade and Air Gas received these funds as they have passed through contracts with Water and Light. At the January 2023 Commission meeting, staff presented options for use of these funds, including rate stabilization, bill credits, conservation, capital investment, customers helping customers, and resource development. During the late December 2022 windstorm, Water and Light had a number of outages throughout our service areas, primarily located in rural areas, but including the water treatment plant, which serves all of us, which is actually serviced by Western Oregon Electric Cooperative. And our water treatment plant was out of power for close to a week. However, as you may be aware, there's a recent fuel station that Water and Light has put in, and because of that, they were able to deploy two deliveries of 1,400 and 700 gallons respectfully, respectively, what's the, respectively, thank you, 700 gallons of fuel to the treatment plant at that time. So that's to keep the generators going, to keep the treatment plant treating our water. Commissioners also heard from engineering about the water transmission line alignment study. That's a long-term project. Two of eight phases have been completed. The alignment study was looking at the route for the remaining six phases and recommends following the existing route. This will allow for improved hydraulics for future Zone 2, here in the city. So Water and Light's 2011 Water Master Plan for this project had original costs for completion of the project at $24 million, and now this project is expected to exceed $100 million. And lastly, on Water and Light, the General Manager and I will be heading to Washington DC at the end of February to meet with our congressional delegation on issues related to the electric utility industry. This is an annual event led by the American Public Power Association, which is a national association of public power utilities, of which Water and Light is a member. Thank you. I will now consider Resolution Number 2023-0, I'm sorry, will now consider the consent agenda. Does any councillor-
Mayor, do you want to do department head reports?
Oh, gosh, I certainly do. How about these department head reports? Our City Attorney Walt Gowell?
Our office this past month centered mostly on procurement questions and contract review questions. Other than that, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. And Finance Director Jennifer Cuellar?
In the Finance Office, we're very busy working on the annual budget process, so more fun coming your way in a few months, and that's, that's the most important thing going on right now, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you. Fire Chief Rich Lightford?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Our, our biggest piece of information is that we are finally up and running with our fourth 24-hour ambulance consecutively for, from now on. So we'll have four ambulances in service, and that is the BLS car, the Basic Life Support Car, that we discussed staffing a while ago with the GEMT dollars that we finally got the, the individuals hired and put in place. So there will be some overtime coverage for the vehicles because we still don't have all of our vacancies filled. We still have five vacancies within the department currently. We have one offer out there pending right now, but we are up and running the fourth ambulance now.
Thank you. City Manager Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items to report. This Monday, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and myself, as well as the mayor, for part of the meeting, were part of a large group of stakeholders convened by Yamhill County Health and Human Services to discuss the opioid crisis and the potential for partnering and leveraging our opioid settlement dollars to, to address regional needs. That group was actually originally convened several months ago. We had initial conversations. Parties at the table have included the Sheriff's Office, Health and Human Services staff, the cities of McMinnville and Newburgh, Tuolaton Valley Fire Rescue, Samaritan Hospital, and others. We've been on hiatus for a few months, driven by a variety of factors, but we reconvene this week. And one of the topics we talked about in a fair amount of detail, which was alluded to in the mayor's comments earlier in the evening, is the county's plan to substantially expand their mobile crisis response unit, and how the partners can work together to, to leverage that to, to regional benefit. And the Chief Scales may have more TDL that he'd like to add to that report during his report. Secondly, the mayor runs a fast meeting and was quick with a gavel earlier with the Special Budget Committee meeting, but I want to note on the record that the staff appreciates the council and budget committee's diligence and focus and clear direction. Thank you for that service. We appreciate it. And finally, just note for the record that I'll be out of town the rest of the week on International City Management Association business. You have a detailed email in your inbox. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief of Police Matt Scales?
Hey, it works. Real quick, Mr. Towery, you talked about the mobile crisis response meeting we had yesterday. I'd also throw out that I think you did an outstanding job of covering the plan that covers bridges, the plan that is under works, that the city's undertaking, at least a draft proposal. That's big. I think we're out front, leading some of the entities involved in that discussion with some, I think proactive response to community needs and behavioral issues within the community. So thank you for that. Some staffing updates, we, and this is a broken record, we are still open seven positions. We will have one conditional going out later on in the couple of months, as soon as we can get people to start training, the capacity to continue to train. We do have two officers that went to the academy, two officers that will be headed to the academy in a month. And lastly, good news, we did get one officer out of the Recruit Academy. Ryan Heath is back with us training. He's continuing his training. He was, besides graduating, he was the outstanding DT student for his class, so that's a nice honor for him. And then lastly, you, you all may recall that last year, you provided us budget authority to purchase two canines that we're placing two that had passed away over the last year and a half. And our officers that are the handlers to be will be coming back with two Alanoas that will be tracking dogs for our community. We have not had tracking dogs within the community for many years, so this is a plus. And then they'll head off for, I think, two, two and a half months of canine training with the Hillsborough Police Department. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. And IT Director Scott Burke?
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing further, council tonight.
Thank you. And Library Director Jenny Berg, is that the Jenny that's, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Nipping at the heels of the report from the Chief of Police, I just want to mention that the Read to the Dogs program that happened on Saturday at the library was quite a success with families and kids enjoying their time, and library staff enjoying their time reading to the dogs, the service dogs at the library.
Wonderful, thank you. HR Director Vicki Hedges?
Just update, we completed the second round of city attorney interviews last week, so thanks to those councillors that could attend, and we're looking forward to moving forward in that process.
Thank you. And Community Development Director Heather Richards?
Good evening. So excited to hear that Stratus Village received the Regional Project Award. Thank you South of the Clock for that. It's a great project, and we'll reach out to them and let them know. I also wanted to clarify some discussion that's, has occurred recently, based on a news article today in the paper. The Economic Vitality Leadership Council had a dialogue about a business licensing program at their meeting last week. That dialogue was really, the core of that dialogue was, is there value in a business licensing program in McMinnville? And if there is value, what would that look like? With an emphasis that if it was implemented, it would need to serve the business community. And they made a decision that they felt it needed to be evaluated and vetted, and wanted to put together a subcommittee of community business leaders and stakeholders to do so. So that's the process that is underway right now with that.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our consent agenda. Would any councillor request to have the item removed from the consent agenda? I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
移到
I have a motion by Councillor Geary and a second by Councillor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, by saying nay. The consent agenda has passed unanimously. I will now consider Resolution Number 2023-05, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and making supplemental appropriations for the general fund, wastewater services fund, and information services fund for approved American Rescue Plan Act projects. I will now call on Finance Director Cuellar to present.
So, good evening. What you have before you is a, is a resolution which will add appropriations associated with already approved projects for ARPA. It just was the timing. We didn't know when we were putting together the FY23 budget, the budget year we're in now, how many of those projects and for what dollar amounts would be moving forward this year. and for what dollar amounts would be moving forward this year. So, it's a list of, I believe it's ten separate projects, most of them in the General Fund for parks and recreation activities, for parks maintenance activities, as well as the library's electric vehicle. There are also three projects that would be done under the auspices of the Information Services Fund, and then a single project over in the Wastewater Services Fund. So, the total amount of these projects is $769,000. This will have a neutral impact on the General Fund and our fund balances because it's got funding lined up to support these expenses. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer as I'm able.
Does any councillor have any question at this time? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2023-05, 05?
So moved.
I have a motion from councillor Geary and a, or a second from, and a second from councillor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. We will now consider resolution number 2023-06, a resolution approving the order of the County Commission attached Exhibit 1, and consenting to the formation of a fire district incorporating the city limits should such a ballot measure be passed by the voters. Fire Chief Rich Leifert, will you please present?
Mayor and council, the resolution before you this evening is a direct result of state law that requires any municipal area that is within the boundaries of a new proposed district must, is required to produce a resolution affirming and approving the order for the election. That's what this resolution does, and it ultimately is a result of your initial resolution and petition that you forwarded to the board requesting the order to be placed. Staff recommends approving resolution 2023-06.
Thank you very much. Any council discussion? I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2023-06.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from council president Garvin and a second from councillor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously, and I will now adjourn this council meeting at 7:44 PM.